Okay, hello and good evening, everybody. It's seven o'clock PM. I'm the deputy town clerk, Amanda Kurtz. Before we get started, I have a few announcements. Tonight's regularly scheduled Herndon Town Council public hearing is a virtual meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3708.2 as amended, the Governor's Executive Orders as amended, and in accordance with Ordinance 20-0-23, continuity of governmental operations during pandemic disaster COVID-19 as amended and re-adopted by the Herndon Town Council on September 8th, 2020, which supersedes previously adopted amendments. Proper notice of the electronic meeting was provided in accordance with the Code of Virginia. Agenda and meeting materials, along with information for viewing the meeting and submitting comments for the record, are available on the town's website. The meeting will begin with a roll call to determine a quorum, and all votes, including adjournment, will be by roll call vote. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Amanda. I will call our meeting to order this evening. As the clerk calls attendance, each member of council, please unmute and state your name for the record and that you are present. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Town manager?
Bill Ashton, present.
Town attorney?
Lisa Yates, present.
Olem?
Ms. Present.
Baker?
Baker, present.
Delagula?
Delagula, present.
DeKalb?
DeKalb, present.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, present.
McKenna?
McKenna, present.
Merkel?
Merkel is present. So for the record, there is a quorum electronically. This is our last meeting before the holidays, our last public hearing of the year, and my last public hearing with my colleagues here on the council. I extend my personal wishes to everyone for a safe socially distance and happy holiday season this year. We do have three sets of minutes up for approval this evening. Is there a motion to approve the November 10th work session minutes?
Friedrichs, motion to approve.
Baker, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Olem?
Baker, yes.
Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeKalb?
DeKalb, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel?
Merkel, yes. That motion carries 7-0, and I'm looking for a motion to approve the November 17th public hearing minutes.
So moved. DeKalb?
McKenna will second.
Okay, I remember that meeting well. Is there discussion on the motion, anyone? Okay, seeing none, I will ask the clerk again to please call the roll.
Olem?
Baker, yes.
Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeKalb?
DeKalb, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel?
Merkel, yes, and that motion carries. And finally, is there a motion to approve the December 1st work session minutes, anyone?
Baker, I'll move, so moved.
McKenna will second.
Okay, a motion to approve made by Baker, seconded by McKenna. Is there discussion on the motion? And seeing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll once again. Thank you.
Olem?
Olem, yes.
Oh, I can hear you. Baker?
Baker, yes.
Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeKalb?
DeKalb, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel?
Merkel, yes, and that motion carries as well. I will recognize our town manager, Bill Ashton, for comments this evening. Mr. Ashton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Bill Ashton, town manager. It's been our process and protocol since the beginning of COVID. I generally lead off my comments with commentary about what is happening with the pandemic, especially county-wide, regionally. The county case count continues to rise. All numbers are trending the wrong direction in terms of percent positivity and other things of that nature. They, county health is still encouraging everyone to continue to do what we have been doing. They attribute a lot of what is occurring to gatherings around the holidays, people traveling, a lot of COVID fatigue. People are starting to lose their discipline on mask-wearing and social distancing and the like, and they encourage all to do so. Just as a means of a vaccine update, this week, the FDA will be looking at one of the two vaccines, the Pfizer vaccine for emergency use authorization. The vaccines have already started to ship in pre-stage. Prior to this, they will be looking later in the week at the Moderna emergency use authorization. Those vaccines have also shipped and have started to pre-stage. Phase 1 will be focused primarily through the hospitals towards healthcare workers and then trying to get into long-term care facilities. Phase 1B will focus on essential personnel, public safety, and emergency EMS folks, and you will see additional follow-on stages after that. The general stage where it will be in the general population is in Phase 2. Phase 2 looks to be somewhat probably in the second quarter of 2021, probably late spring, early summer. We, I've been working with Dr. Gloria on a lot of things. She's asking the town to help communicate the message of the safety of the vaccine, and she's asking us to continue to echo the messaging that we've had in the past in terms of the social distancing, masking, and staying home when you're sick. We're also hopeful that as the vaccine, as we start to understand how the vaccine point of distributions are going to evolve, I will certainly be working with the county health to make sure Herndon is well-represented in points of distribution. One other COVID piece of news, we were able to achieve from the county some $50,000 for water bill delinquencies that we are working right now with a process by which we can understand if the, if the delinquencies were needs-based and attend to deal with that. And the staff, like I said, is working on it as we speak, but you'll hear more on that in the coming days, if not week or so. I will be sending an email out to you. Pivoting away from COVID, back to a conversation that took place last week at last week's work session, it actually has been a theme for, for a lot of this council's term, is the workforce housing, affordable housing question. And the town is, the staff has been working on a couple of ideas to help solidify policy for the council. And one of the things that we were, we've been looking at is educational opportunities for both me to learn more, so I can help advise you better, but also to give you all opportunities to learn more about what's at your disposal under current state law. And thanks to Lisa Yates and her hard work, we've managed to start to put together a panel of subject matter experts in this area, and we're looking to bring them in early in January. It's tentatively scheduled for January 5th at 10:00 AM. It will be a WebEx. It will be, it will be video recorded, so if you aren't able to participate directly, you can certainly go back and watch the video at your leisure. It's an open public meeting, and we will be advertising it accordingly. The panel that we're putting together has vast experience in the areas of housing options, affordable workforce, et cetera, a lot of experience in proffer and proffer reform that's occurred at the state level, a lot of experience in just dealing with this at, at the state level. And this is, this is a pretty, we're starting to put together a pretty good panel for this, but this is looking to shape up for January 5th at 10:00 AM. I view this as a first of several things I would hope that we could deliver to you in terms of helping you understand what's in your toolkit, so that we can possibly start solidifying this from a policy perspective, putting together a policy statement. I also am going to suggest you probably in the next council, a baseline study that we could bring a consultant to do some baseline analysis of what our housing stock currently is, so we can start identifying where the needs truly lie, and we can start developing policy and goals, vision goals, to meet those, those, where you want to be in terms of housing. And at that point, then between the tools and the toolbox, and a better understanding of what your vision is and where you want to go with this, we could put together not just a policy, but the, the processes of which to effectuate this. And so I look forward to this being a very spirited conversation as we move forward into next term. Again, I want to thank Lisa Yates for starting to put together the, the group, and you'll be getting more on this in the coming weeks. Fi, or not finally, third thing of four, I, our HR department, we do have some vacancies that need to be filled. We have frozen a lot of positions, but there's a lot of positions that we need to fill for various operational need, and in a very competitive employment environment, the DC region did not realize the unemployment rate that many in the country have realized. So we're in a very, still a very competitive employment market for a lot of these positions. Our HR department, getting a little bit creative, reached out and started working with our communications department, and between Ann and Tanya, they put together a recruiting video that I saw for the first time yesterday, and it is, it really wants to make me work for Herndon, even though I am. I would come back and go for one of these jobs. And for those members leaving council, you may want to consider it because this, this video that we're about to show you really, really strikes home as to what this staff is, who this staff is, and the character of the people that you all, that we employ in this town. So with that, Jess, could you roll that video for me, please? Jess, are you okay? They kind of, we kind of paused without sound. Okay, it sounds, it looks like we have some technical difficulties. I'm not going to hold up this meeting. Jess, go ahead and just, just put it away. I will send this link out to you all. I think this is something that is, it, it truly is a remarkable piece of work, and I also want to thank the folks at HGTV who did the video production and the editing of, of the project, Ann and her leadership in setting the message, Tanya identifying some really quality staff people that are truly, you know, leadership doesn't just happen at the top in an organization, it happens throughout an organization. These are rank-and-file, first-line supervisor leaders in our organization that just get after it every day, and, and I commend it to you because it truly, it's a very well-done video, and I'm very pleased to have it. So, and lastly, before I surrender the, the floor, is I just want to wish this council, I've enjoyed working with this council, and I want to wish the exiting council members well as they go off and leave us. I've really enjoyed working with you over these many years, not just in this position and in my previous position as well. I've, I've learned a lot from you all, and, and hopefully I've been able to enrich you a little bit along the way, but I think the debt is way owed. I owe it more than you do, and I do appreciate everything you've done and truly have a wonderful, wonderful post-council life. Congratulations, you get your Tuesdays back. You must be thrilled. I don't even know what happens on Tuesdays anymore, so please enjoy it, and, and truthfully, I wish, be, be well. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for the town manager about his comments before we move to council level comments? Anybody? Ms. Friedrichs?
I just, I wanted to ask back to the COVID fatigue and infection rates and when we're getting, we're all getting the vaccine. I've been working under the assumption that elder housing in general was going to be one of the first...
Very, Phase 1.
Okay, but, but you said nursing homes, so then I started to think, hmm, you know, assisted living, like Harbor House, are those in the first set?
Phase 1 is divided into three, three areas. Long-term care facilities, I'm sorry, I misspoke with the nursing homes, it's long-term care facilities in general is, is an early Phase 1 adopter. Second part of Phase 1 is focused on essential personnel, and then the third part of Phase 1 is focused on people over 65 years old in general. And then it gets to general population in Phase 2. As it's been explained to me, and I've been on, can't tell you how many calls, between Dr. Gloria, head of the state, Dr. Goodfriend out in Loudoun County, who represents Northern Virginia on the state vaccination planning committee, that's generally how it's been laid out to me as I understand it. I have a, if you're interested, I have a series of slides that were done by the Fairfax County Department of Health when they gave a briefing to their staff and to senior management around the county last week. I have that, which also answers a lot of these questions, so I'll be glad to share that as well.
Okay.
Excuse my puppy who's barking like crazy right now.
And I also, despite, I excuse your puppy, but I also wanted to thank you for, and the staff for putting together that panel on January 5th, because one of the big, I was just talking with Councilmember DeKalb about this earlier this evening, but we, we both are struggling, and, and we know the staff has been struggling too, to figure out where to go from here, and, and working on a study and getting those subject matter experts together is going to really make it possible for us to, to do something effective. So thank you very much for that.
Well, and, and this is Bill Ashton again. This is something that I know there are holes in my knowledge base on this, and, and I can only imagine you, you all, from y'all's perspective as well. So I thought this was a wonderful opportunity for me to learn how to better serve you, also for y'all to learn on how to frame the question that we can answer for you. I, I just think it's going to be a, hopefully, a very productive session. And again, I think education in this matter is critical to making good policy, and so therefore, we're looking in other ways, in other areas, we should educate as well. I'm looking for something beyond this one to do something else to help understand how this is not only done at a policy level, but how does it get implemented at like a developer level? I want to start understanding the whole picture so we can ask the right questions, so we can frame the right policies, so we can do the right things to meet the needs that you all want to see happen, but do any, in a way where I believe we have the tools in the toolbox, we just have to leverage them. And that's what I'm hoping to learn out of the 5th.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Ashton? Mr. Delagula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Ashton, just, why do you think it took so long to get to the 5th?
Scheduling. It truly is just getting the right, the people, and also too, this is something we wanted to be able to have sitting council members for, that can actually affect this. So this council is outgoing. After tonight, they, y'all are, you know...
We don't convene again.
You can't, you don't convene.
I, no, the reason, it was kind of a, the point, I thought we had majority on council to do this back in probably 19 when we started. I'm a little disappointed that it's taken this long to get to a point where we're going to convene a session on, on the topic. I think, thank you, but I, I hope that this would have happened a while back.
And, and you're absolutely right, and I'll take, I'll take the, the brunt of that. To be honest with you, in 19, we, we sat down, we had some meetings with the Fairfax County Housing Authority, and that's the approach we had started to take, and we, and we are taking. We are working with the Housing Authority on, on a project right now, currently. We still thought the Housing Authority would be the best way in which to effectuate this. And as we got deeper into this, that, to me, as I'm watching the council, I, especially in the last several months, take COVID out, because we weren't talking about anything, but once we got post-COVID, we started talking about things again, it became very apparent to me that the Housing Authority wasn't enough to meet the goals that you all are hoping to achieve, so we had to look at it through a different lens, and that's why we decided to start to put this together. But if there's anyone that should bear the brunt of that, I would suppose that's me.
Appreciate the update, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions before we move to council-level comments? Okay, great. Thank you. So this does bring us to comments from the council. Who would like to start us off? Anybody? Mr. DeKalb, followed by Ms. Friedrichs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, happy holidays to everybody and to our town residents, to everybody. Please enjoy the holidays in a socially-distanced way, because, yes, be careful and enjoy the holidays. The other thing is, you know, I want to congratulate the outgoing council, especially, everybody is outgoing anyways, right? This term is ending, but especially Mayor Merkel, Councilmember Baker, and McKenna. We greatly appreciate your contribution, your work for the town, and I really enjoyed with, working with all of you for the past two years, and thank you. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your engagement for the town. Thank you for your guidance as well, because I was a rookie council member then, right? So appreciate your, you know, some fruitful conversation we had as well, so thank you. We really appreciate your work for the town. And another thing is, we already discussed, we already touched a little bit on housing, especially the town manager already mentioned that, and appreciate you bringing that session for January 5th to educate ourselves, to the public as well, on housing issues, the workforce housing, et cetera, et cetera. And I had a great conversation with Town Attorney L. C. S. about housing issues, workforce housing and all those things. I spoke with the town manager as well, and the council members as well. Obviously, with the business, with the work and everything, didn't get time to reach out to everybody, but especially the, the council, which remains, wanted to make sure we, we, we discuss this, we wanted to make sure we take this further. So my ask to the, because based on the conversation we had last work session and prior, it is apparent that the reason we're not mentioning workforce housing, obviously, we cannot ask anything because of the proffer situation and all those things, but the reason it has not been asked, the reason we're not able to influence the applicants about our housing situation, what we want, is because we do not have a policy statement crafted that shows our position in housing, whatever number is, whatever it could be, a percentage. We, we have not crafted that ourselves. So my, my ask will be to make that an agenda, and obviously, my ask to the staff is to do some research, analysis, maybe there are already jurisdiction, local jurisdiction, who have adopted good policies on this one that we can model. If nobody has adopted, we can be a model as well, right? To, to at least start that, that shows our position in terms of workforce housing, whatever percentage is, you know, is optimal, we desire. If we can at least show that and approve that and make it a policy statement, obviously, we cannot directly ask, but we can influence. And even for our staff, when they are in initial conversation with the applicant, they can always refer the applicants back to our housing needs and our position, our interest that might influence the applicants to, to bring something as part of workforce housing. So I wanted to ask the staff, and I talked to Bill Ashton as well, and he's very positive about that one. So that's one thing my ask to the staff. And other than that, I'm very happy that we are talking about the housing now, and I'm very glad that we have a council that everybody believes in housing issues that exist, because the first part is to accept that the issue exists. So we all accept the issue exists, and then we are willing to do whatever it takes to tackle the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeKalb. I think it was Ms. Friedrichs next.
Ah, I am not muted. Sorry, I didn't hear the little bing. Like Councilmember DeKalb, I want to thank Lisa, Jen, and Bill for being such great colleagues for so many years. I know it's not easy, but you have sacrificed so much and spent so much time studying and learning and preparing and developing consensus, and it, it has not gone unnoticed. I especially want to thank Lisa and Jen for volunteering for the council for the arts of Herndon with our golf tournament for so many years. It was a lot of fun, and, and we really appreciated your help. And I know both of you continue, Jen particularly with Friday Night Live and Winter Market, and both of you supporting the arts the way you do. You know, we don't always feel like it should be done the same way, but the fact that you care and that you really want this to be an arts community matters a lot and has made a huge change. When I first moved to Herndon, the arts were not even discussed. I knew they were here somewhere, but I just didn't know where. So you two have done so much, so much, and so grateful for that. And Bill, your work with the kids, your work with veterans' issues and so forth, I deeply appreciate all that you've done, and you've been a very congenial person to work with. So I know you all are going to do even better things when you finish here, not just that you have a free Tuesday night, but something even better. So wish you all the best and hope to see you back here at some point.
Thank you, Ms. Friedrichs. Who would like to go next? Not everybody else. Ms. Baker?
All right, well, I'm happy to go next. So obviously, this is my last council meeting, and so I did write a few things, just so I didn't forget anyone. It is weird to do this virtually, right, and not have kind of that closure in that final meeting where we get to have folks in a room and typically read the proclamations and all those things, so. But knowing all that, we're in the situation we're in, I want to just say a huge thank you to the citizens of this community for entrusting me for six and a half years to represent, to represent this town. It's been an absolute honor for me to have given my time and energy to my adopted hometown that I love so much. Thank you to so many of my friends and neighbors who reached out to me today with kind and encouraging messages. I got a lot of messages today, which I haven't responded to, but I, I do appreciate them, and I will respond. I'm very thankful, and the town should be certainly very thankful, for the leadership of Bill Ashton, of Lisa Yates, of Chief Maggie DeBoer, and the 260 employees of this town for taking great care of all of us, of our citizens, of our businesses. Thank you to the Clerk's Office, Vicky, Margie, Amanda, who all of us on council work with very closely, for all that you do, and specifically for the, the proclamation that you wrote that, tonight, that summarizing my time on council and reminding me of some of the projects and initiatives that I was able to be a part of, like the Herndon Metro and downtown redevelopment, including the comprehensive agreement with Comstock, the W&amp;O D trail lighting, the historic markers and gateway signs, the recent adoption of the historic district overlay guidelines, and the addition of Veterans Day as a holiday. I'm certainly proud of that one as well. I've been able to serve on lots of committees, I've been able to speak at lots of events in my role as both vice mayor and council member, which was really fun for me. I was an active member with Virginia Municipal League and was able to serve as the chair of VML's Community and Economic Development Policy Committee. I'm grateful for the opportunity I had to be an informal international representative for the town. When I met with the mayor of Runnymede, England, our sister city, right, and what we have, Runnymede Park is named after that, I met with them in 2015, which was the 800th anniversary of the sealing of the Magna Carta, which happened in that town. So that was a really special moment to be a part of and to get to meet with that mayor and stand by a big statue of Queen Elizabeth. Last year, I was able to join the Herndon High School Band as they represented our town and, and our country at the 75th anniversary of D-Day in, in Normandy, France. One of the things I reflected on, as I think about my time on council, but just my life, is it's all one, right? I talk about work-life integration, not work-life balance, but it's all, all together for me. And there's three themes and principles that just continue to, to come up for me in my personal and my professional life. Fairness, community, growth. Fairness, right, that we should look out for each other, that we, we should do things that are just and kind. Community, we, we all need to be connected to each other. That's, that's kind of why we're all here, right? It's for those, those moments of connection, that we're stronger and better when we work together. And that's, I mean, that's why Herndon is such a great place to live and work, not just because we have cool events and cool amenities, it's because we're a community of people who really care about each other. And growth, right? That Maya Angelou quote variation that I talk about a lot, "When you know better, you do better." I love that. That speaks to me, that I want to be constantly learning, that we should be challenging the status quo, particularly as folks in elected positions, right? Asking if there are better ways when we hear, we've always done it that way, right? In, in any situation we're in, we should always be looking at that and certainly listening to each other. There are many, many things I'm going to miss about being part of this body. Yes, I'll, I'll have my Tuesdays free from now on, but I really will miss so much. But I'm, I'm also really happy that, that other folks are going to take the reins. I think that's really important, too. It's been a wonderful... It's been a wonderful experience for me. I feel like I've gotten so much more from this than I gave. I wish all the best to my current colleagues, to my four colleagues and particularly to our future mayor, Sheila Olem, who are going to continue to serve and to the three new members who will be joining them on January 1st. I wish you all the best in, because this is an amazing experience to be a part of and the town is counting on you to continue to, to do great things. I promise that I will continue to certainly be an active and positive member of this community that we all love and very appreciative. Thank you, Herndon. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. And who's next? Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, let's dovetail off of Ms. Baker's comments. This is actually the second time I've done this. I did this 20 years ago, no, 18 years ago in New Jersey, but virtual is a little weird. So I definitely understand that. I just want to thank a lot of people. I mean, first, obviously I want to thank the Herndon Youth Advisory Council. It was a group that was started in 2017. And the reason I wanted to start it was simple. Despite the enormous role that local government plays in our lives, the Constitution doesn't make one mention of it. And I know for a fact, when I was on council the first time, I was lost. And you know, a lot of people ask questions that they might not know what's going on. So I wanted to have a forum where people could understand what everyone did, what their roles and responsibilities were, and more importantly, teach critical thinking skills. There wasn't a right answer. There was the answer based upon what was given to them. And I want to thank all the council members, Mr. DeCall, who made a few meetings, and also Mayor Merkel, I think you had a 90% attendance rate, so thank you very much for that. It was, it was a lot of fun and more importantly, I think, again, I learned more from them than I learned from myself and you know, some of the things, including the growing kids therapy school, so a truly diverse group of students with, you know, audio sensory deprivation sometimes and you know, that led to some major things, including how police handle people with autism and how we react to that. So a lot of good things came from that. I also want to thank our elected federal, state and county leadership. Without their help, the work done on the bus depot in Herndon with over $14 million in upgrades, the MOD for $2 million to the county regarding downtown development, the continued efforts of our state officials to make the Affordable House and Question easier to solve, and our congressional and senate leadership continuing to make Herndon, Virginia one of the greatest places to call home in the United States. I want to thank those who work for the town of Herndon, your hard work, especially during this extraordinary time, it's not only showing the character of the people that work for this town, but show out the town how lucky we are to have you in our, great people working on our behalf. I also want to thank the department heads for all your hard work, not just managing your personnel, but your budgets and for reporting to council on matters of importance when called upon. Very important. I want to thank all those who serve on boards and commissions in Herndon. It's a thankless job and your work and vision for the future has made Herndon a 21st century destination and hometown for everybody. Like Ms. Baker, I want to thank Vicky, Margie, Amanda and the Clerk's Office for all the hard work and making this engine go. I'd definitely be lost without your reminders, follow-ups and more importantly, your efforts for this town. I always appreciate your advice and friendship during my tenure. I thank you very much. To our Town Attorney Lisa Yates, I can honestly say I've never worked with a more professional, passionate and knowledgeable Town Attorney. In the 8.5 years I've served in elected capacity, I've worked with four town and borough attorneys and probably 15 or so attorneys on committees I've served in an appointed capacity. You are one of the best I've ever worked with. Your advice has been spot on and more importantly, your understanding of what we can do and what can't do has been invaluable to a guy like me serving in both the Dillon Road and Homeworld State. Thank you for reviewing resolutions I drafted and make sure that they comply and sit forward in the Commonwealth. All Mr. and Mrs. in Old Town Hall and any and all thanks. To our Town Manager, Bill Ashton, thank you. Thank you for your tireless advocacy for this town, including advocacy to you and for Herndon. Thank you for your, for those who work. Thank you to those and for those who work in an amazing town and for the citizens and businesses alike. I just want to give you an idea of what kind of guy Bill is. When COVID-19 hit and the town was trying to scramble to get all the outdoor dining completed in legislative capacity, he was also helping physically put jersey walls in place with the DPW for the businesses to start as soon as they could. That type of attitude and work ethic has Western PA written all over it. When people asked me what my greatest vote cast was, it was for the, it was the decision, excuse me, it was voting for you, Bill. There's no doubt about that. That's probably the best decision I ever made on this council, because we are where we're at today with our budget, with our fiscal responsibility and more importantly, with our vision forward because of what you've done. So I can't thank you enough. To members of the Town Council, I want to thank you for all your hard work. COVID-19 slowed a few things down, but we can, but we can be proud of the passage of an incredibly unique and thoughtful town budget, the downtown development and modifications to the H prayer B that are 30 years in the making. So much has happened since January 1st, 2019. I pray for the continued success of this town in your hands as my time comes to an end. And I also wish Mayor-elect Sheila Olem all the luck in the world. To Mayor Lisa Merkel, I cannot thank you for your love and support enough. How we met is a story unto itself, but I'll tell you something quite remarkable about her. Believe it or not, I have the most votes of any council member against her. I voted two or three budget votes last year, meals, tax and grant funding, and four other resolutions as well in this session. In the four years we have been together, I disagree with you nine times. This is what's so great about her. She never took it personally. Did we have spirited discussions before and after? You bet. But she knew, she knew and I know and knows, I've always done my best to do what's right for the town and I know she has too. Lisa, you have been the leader the town needed and more importantly, someone I can count on as one of my best friends in the world. You have always had my back and always supported me, even when it wasn't the popular thing to do. I will forever be grateful for your love, friendship and support my four years serving this amazing town. Finally, I want to thank the former Chair of Herndon Planning Commission, Acting Chair of the Fairfax County Housing Authority, 2019 Lady Fairfax, my wife Melissa. You have been kind, thoughtful, patient and loving through everything and I cannot thank you and the kids enough. I am lucky you chose to quarantine with me. We got married February 22nd, 2020. It's a palindrome and more importantly, for me, it's the 40th anniversary of the Russians losing to the United States in the miracle on eyes. So miracles do happen. Just before the pandemic began was probably the last large gathering this town really had. My decision not to run was based on, were based on multiple factors and my priorities. Right now, it is my amazing wife, my wonderful still children and my country as my job is, my job has me supporting the mission of 22 agencies that make up the Department of Homeland Security. I've been working almost nonstop since COVID-19 was classified as a pandemic at 1:43 PM on March 11th, 2020, and the world has not been the same since. But the work I do has kept thousands of people safe by working remotely and mitigating cyber attacks on national security interests. I do not know what the future holds, but I will say this. I moved to the town as a man who was changing career paths from institutional finance to IT sales to federal government. A man who almost lost everything, taking care of his parents to someone who has financial stability again in his life and losing his parents and his family unit only to become part of another family and be part of something larger than myself. I cannot thank the residents, business and supporters of my Herndon run for elected office. It's kind of funny that the political campaign committee I had was called Friends of Bill McKenna, because everyone who ever donated to that campaign were actually friends. Someone who are friends I've had since preschool and with whom I stay in contact with to this very day. I've lived a truly blessed life and I hope that my time on council is remembered as someone who worked hard for the town, did the work that was needed, was willing to do that, things that were in the town's interest over his own, willing to do the work necessary to get meaningful legislation passed and that if you didn't back down from a challenge or a fight, something my mother and father taught me very well. Thank you, God bless you, God bless this 4.2 square miles of endless possibilities. Thanks.
Thank you, McKenna. Who is next? I think we still have Mr. Delagula and the Vice Mayor. Madam Vice Mayor. I think you're on mute.
There. Well, the first thing, a real important day happened yesterday. Some of you might have let it pass with no knowledge, but my neighbors, Chris and Robin Smith, Chris's father, James, turned 100 yesterday. James Smith is a frequent visitor of the Bowers Nash Island and comes over to see us often. He was in World War II, joined the service in 1939 and then he spent four decades with the CIA. So yesterday, at his 100th birthday party over in Fairfax, Cap Peterson and Delegate Bulova showed up, Sharon Bulova, the former chairman of Fairfax County Board of Supervisors, and they had a little parade for him. It wasn't too little. They said there were quite a few cars and the wind chill was pretty bad, but all had a good time and I think that was a wonderful thing to do for an individual that did so much for his country over the years and has given a lot of enjoyment to the folks in Herndon that show up on the island numerous times a year. So with that, happy birthday, Mrs. Smith. And next, I just want to say a little bit about my colleagues that will be leaving. Mayor Merkel, Councilmembers Baker and McKenna. We've gotten a lot of stuff done, especially you and I, Mayor Merkel. We joined the council at the same time, 10 years ago, and we had the oldest fire station in Fairfax County with the worst equipment. The only reason we had that equipment was it could dip into that little tiny fire station. And we had previous councils that wouldn't approve it or push for it. So that was the first thing we put on it. Jennifer was fortunate enough that it took seven years, so she was there for it, as well as Bill, McKenna and Sydney were all there when it opened seven years later. Even though we were moving like a fire engine to get that done, it took seven years. The entrances around the town, that was something that Jen was there for, as well as Lisa and I. I think Bill came soon after, as well as Sydney. And when we first in 2011, with, at the time, a planning commissioner was on the committee with me for the PACT and then ended up serving with us on the Town Council, someone named Jonas. And we did the first plan where we worked with Fairfax County to improve our walking paths, trails in the town of Herndon to make sure they were going to be connecting with the county. And that ended up leading to a lot of dollars flowing into Herndon. The revitalizing of the downtown, that was one of the reasons Lisa ran originally and I definitely was in on that too. So that's another thing. We've been working on that since we got on the council. And everyone sitting here tonight got to be here when these papers finally got signed. And then Lisa, you'll be there for the shovel in the ground, I'm sure, as well as Jen and so, and many others that have been helping us. The metro access was part of the reason I wanted to be active on the Town Council. I had been involved back in 2000. So Lisa and I, as well as my two colleagues that are leaving and the ones that are on here now, we've been working on these things that are happening right now and it's really exciting seeing these things happening. The lighting on the WNOD trail, which Jen has already mentioned, and the updating of the historic preservation guidelines, which we've worked on for eight years. So that was a lot of hard work. I didn't think we would ever get that done, but finally, finally, even with the COVID slowing us down, we got it done. So that's what I'm talking about when I talk about bringing home dollars and from the state and the county and the feds. And Lisa and Jen and Bill, you've all been a big help in that and I thank you. Bill, I'm really going to miss hanging out with you in my kitchen every couple of months, having our coffee and crips on or whatever I have to have in the house at the time. Jen, I'll never forget the dance contest, the competition for Dancing with the Stars. You represented the town well, as well as one of our police officers, raising money for nonprofits. And Lisa, I hope you're going to have some time to enjoy your kids. When I ran, my youngest was off graduating from high school and I know that you have sacrificed a lot not being at all those things. So if you think being Mayor kept you busy, I think you better roll your sleeves up because you're getting ready to be really busy as the mom that can go to all the games, the sports mom. Good luck to all of you and Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy Hanukkah, whatever it is you celebrate, have a good one. And think about me, I'm going to finally get the daughter and I've always wanted, my son is getting married and I even hang out and love her mom. We get along fine. So the mother-in-law is going to be confiding against these two. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Sheila. Leave it to Sheila to make me tear up. Are there, are there any other comments of council? Mr. Delagula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll keep it brief and just say I was there to support all of you outgoing council members when you came on. So let me support you on the way out with some words that were given to me by Senator Mark Warner at the time, and I may have shared them before. You do the best you can and I think everyone that serves here does so. And it's never perfect, it's never going to be. But just remember that a third of the people have always loved you, a third of the people will always hate you and a third of the people just want you to get stuff done. And I want to thank you all for staying focused on that third that really needed to have stuff done. And I think as a body, this was one of the most professional groups that I've had the privilege to work with and I just wish you all well. Again, it's not just Tuesday nights. There's a lot that you all have sacrificed. We all sacrificed, but I think to the extent that you put in time and energy and effort, thank you for your service. It has not gone unnoticed. And like I said, you stayed focused on getting stuff done, especially this past year, which was quite painful for a lot of folks. So all the best, definitely enjoy not only the Tuesday nights, but all the additional free hours and energy you have on the future endeavors and pursuits for you. So God bless you guys.
Thank you very much. Stay focused. Well, thank you to all my colleagues. I'm going to hold my comments until the end of the meeting so we can get, we have a lengthy agenda, but I just want to thank you all for your kind words and let's get this going. It's our last meeting together, so let's make it count. This brings us to comments from the audience. We, let's see, so individuals may address the council on any item that is not listed as a public hearing item. Since we've been virtual, we have been using a speaker's list and we'll continue to do that this evening. We'll call on those folks who have registered for comments from the audience. So I will ask our deputy town clerk if anyone has registered.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have three registered speakers this evening.
Great. So I will recognize those individuals. I will pause briefly while IT gets them set up to the ability to address the council, the speakers. To the speakers, you will have up to three minutes and I'll ask that you state your name and address for the record. A timer will appear on the webex screen and I ask that you please try to wrap up when you see that 30 seconds are left on the screen. And so we'll see if our speakers are with us this evening. First up is Jay Hadlock. There he is. We'll give him a second. State your name and address for the record once, once you're enabled. It's nice to maybe see you, definitely hear you. Good evening. Go ahead, Mr. Hadlock.
Good evening, Mayor Lisa, members of the Town Council, Town Manager Ashton and Town Attorney Yates. My name is Jay Hadlock and I reside at 515 Alabama Drive in the town of Herndon. I have some comments related to the recently approved amendment to the Comprehensive Downtown Redevelopment Agreement. Please bear in mind, these comments are based on publicly available information and my impressions. As a resident of the town since 1979, I've followed the various efforts to redevelop the downtown. With the signing of the Comprehensive Agreement in October 2017, it looked like redevelopment would finally happen. With an appeal by some town residents delayed and basically required a restart of the process, public information was reduced to a frequently asked questions, fact sheet, questions from the public regarding what's going on with the downtown redevelopment project remain unanswered until very recently. My first clue that something might be in the works was approval of an ordinance creating an arts district that included the just- an arts district that included just over four acre parcel slated for redevelopment by Comstock. The ordinance, as written and approved, provides major economic development incentives for Comstock, as well as others who qualify under the ordinance. Following town council approval of that ordinance, a detailed amendment to the Comprehensive Agreement was placed on the November 10th Town Council Work Session. After reading the staff report for the amendment, especially the fiscal impact, I realized the town needed Comstock more than Comstock needed the town. The credit of town negotiators, a date of conveyance no later than a week from tonight, was part of the amendment along with, quote, "increasing the parent guarantee by an additional $5 million to $10 million to cover the arts center and parking in the depot." Also, Comstock was given a start to construction date by December 31st, 2021. This was weakened by including extended certain rights to Comstock to pause the commencement of construction due to market conditions and other matters, including delays caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. My understanding of this beginning construction extension could mean a further delay into 2022. In addition, it is not clear if the needed culvert repair and environmental remediation on the site by the town needs doing before construction can begin. A final comment, the discussion about the amendment included comments about the effect increased material and labor costs, as well as effects of COVID-19 had on Comstock in relation to Herndon project. Including the past three years, as well as before that, Comstock has been building and resting. Also, other development projects to the east, south, and west of the town, especially in the last two years, have not slowed down. If anything, they have accelerated. I'm not against the downtown redevelopment project. I do think the town was overly generous in its agreement with Comstock. It's now up to Comstock to follow through. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hadlock. Very well-timed comments. Appreciate you being here tonight. Our next speaker who has signed up is Bryce Cumby.
Madam Mayor, I do not see him on the speaker's list this evening. I mean, excuse me, on the attendee list, yes.
Okay. So I'll go to the next speaker, which is Dorian Aranida, I believe. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing. There's Dorian. While you're getting set up, I'll just remind you, we need your name and address for the record, but you'll have three minutes to speak and try to wrap up when you see that the countdown is nearing 30 seconds. There you are. Good evening, sir.
Hello.
I can, very well.
My name is Dorian Aranida. I reside at 63 Jefferson Street. I'd like to apply for an exemption for a home-based business. The Section 78-80, the standards of home-based businesses intends to preserve sanctity, tranquility, value, appearance, aimed at towns, residential neighborhoods, and residential units, and prevent and eliminate discontinued or discontinued home-based businesses that negatively impact residents living near or around, next to the site, home-based businesses. There's a bunch of prohibited businesses on there that don't apply to me. It's an IT virtual business. I do have a license in private investigation, but it's for cyber investigations. Of the items that apply here, I don't have any physical office to inspect, so I don't have any area inside the house other than my computer and any information on hard drives or clouds, conduct of the business, as conducted inside the house. I don't accept customers. I don't accept customers at my house. I don't have visitors at my house. Anything that I deal with, dealing with customers or visitors, are done at the customer's site. There's a clause here for being able to get a special exemption for home-based businesses that don't are consistent with the standards in here. And so I'd like to apply for that, considering I have no impact whatsoever on my neighbors' surrounding area. I don't produce any solid wastes. I don't have, like I said, don't visitors. Any deliveries are purely residential-style deliveries. And yeah, and that's it.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm not sure if you have connected with our community development department yet, but Amanda, do we have, do we have his contact information? Can the clerk's office reach out and try to connect him with the appropriate staff in community development?
Yes.
Would you, okay, does that help, sir?
So, I understand that, but the town council has to approve special exemption.
Oh, a special exception?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I understand. So still, the staff would be able to help direct you through that process, and if it does indeed need to come to the town council, then they will work with you to get it through that situation. So I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. We'll try to get with you this week on that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kurtz, has Bryce Cumby arrived on our attendee list, to your knowledge?
Madam Mayor, he is not on the attendee list for this WebEx.
Okay. All right, thank you. Maybe we can reach out and make sure that if he had comments, we do get them on the record.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. We appreciate everyone who came forward, and we'll try to work with everyone. We do have a presentation this evening, one virtual presentation, which is the presentation of the town's comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. And I believe I am recognizing Matthew Heathall. Please help me if I have butchered your name, from Brown Edwards and Company LLC, Certified Public Accountants, to present this year's report. And I see that our Director of Finance, Jenny Tripoli, is also here this evening. So maybe I'll turn it over toward Jenny to get us rolling. Or to Matt. Sorry, this virtual thing has its moments.
Toss it over to Matt.
All right, thank you.
Good. Well, hello, everyone. It's good to see everybody virtually this time. You know, it's been a weird year, but we seem to be getting along okay. I'll fill you in on how the audit went, too, in regards to that. But as always, really want to take some time and thank both council and management for the opportunity to serve the town. You know, really want to compliment Jenny and her staff on being ready this year for the audit. You know, it was a unique year for the audit. We were actually able to perform all of our procedures, both the preliminary work and final work remotely. So we did a number of different things to accomplish that, but I really, I thought it went very well. Hopefully Jenny and her staff thought that as well, but we got through it, and I'm glad to, I'm glad to be here presenting on it. The CAFER itself, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, hopefully everybody has seen a copy of that. It does go above and beyond the traditional basic financial statements, includes a transmittal letter both from Town Manager and Jenny, also a section called Management's Discussion and Analysis. It's written very well. It's an area that we certainly encourage folks on boards and councils to read in detail. Jenny and her folks do a good job with that. It also includes a pretty comprehensive statistical section, lots of trend analysis over the past 10 years for the town. That is in the back of the CAFER itself. The town also applies, as many of you know, for the GFOA Certificate of Financial Achievement. The town received that again in 2019, and will be applying again for 2020. That certificate is important. It shows the town is going even more above and beyond what's required just for the financial statement themselves. There are some best practices that the GFOA recommends, and that's a great achievement. The town's received it for a number of years, and I'm sure will continue to in the future. Our audit opinion is included in the CAFER itself. I think it's about 23 pages in. We are issuing an unmodified, which is an modified opinion, which is a clean audit opinion. Basically means, as a part of the audit, we have performed, we believe, the financial statements are free of material misstatement and are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. One unique thing still left for 2020 is completion of what we call the single audit. It is an audit on our side of federal expenditures for the year 2020. One thing that we are waiting on is some guidance and then what we call compliance supplement from the Office of Management and Budget. That has not yet been issued yet. We hope that will be soon, but once that is issued, we will complete our single audit procedures, issue what we call our single audit opinion, and that will be included in the CAFER and hopefully back out to everybody when that's complete. So hopefully that won't be too long. We're not quite sure on that. What I have tonight is what we call our financial analysis. It's something we've done for a number of years for you all. It's a separate report we do for a number of councils and boards. It includes a lot of high-level financial analysis of the town. The information from the CAFER itself is derived in these numbers and is presented in these charts and grants. So that's what I'll focus on for the next couple of minutes. That's okay. And I think I have control here. There we go. First couple of slides here, Slide 4 and 5, our level of net position, kind of gives an overall financial condition of the town at year-end, both for our governmental activities and our proprietary or business-type activities. Across both our governmental and business activities, there were increases for the year. There were some increases in tax revenues, grants for Public Safety and Public Works Cares Act funding, and there were some, I know some guidelines put in place as a part of COVID impact to reduce some spending and at least keep that even for the year. So overall, change in net position for both governmental and activities and business-type activities was positive for the year. Level budgetary fund balance, we're looking at what are our resources available, what do we have available for future expenditures? The first graph here looks at our unassigned fund balance as a percentage of our overall annual expenditures. I believe the town has a policy here of 20% in general fund. The town is certainly exceeding that, at about 38% for the general fund only, a very strong percentage. And this is in addition to some other assigned accounts, revenue stabilization, and other reserves. Months in expenditures and governmental unassigned fund balance, the goal here, one of the guidelines that GFOA puts out is you want to have it as two months expenditures in unassigned fund balance. The town is currently at 3.99 as of year-end. So again, a very strong ratio there at year-end. Percentage of equity is really looking at assets as a percent of our net position. Who really owns the government? How leveraged is the town? You know, really pretty consistent ratios here. There wasn't any new debt issued in 2020, but that'll change things each year to year. Quick ratio is looking at our current financial resources, and are those available to pay what we call our current liabilities? A lot of this is what we think of assets as cash or liquid assets, receivables that we know are going to turn into cash. Do we have enough resources to pay for those upcoming liabilities, whether they be accounts payable, debt payments that are coming up next year? You know, you typically want a ratio of one to one or two to one here. So again, very positive ratios for the town at year-end, 7.5 and 6.84. Next two slides give some detail on what we call our capital asset condition, basically looking at what is the useful life left in our capital assets? If we saw some trends here where the life in these assets was decreasing or getting low, especially with infrastructure and maybe some larger, more expensive assets, it may be time to think about reinvesting things, you know? But the town, over the years, especially, we've been involved as auditors, has continued to make improvements and invest in those significant capital assets. So overall, pretty good trends here as well. Percentage of debt service and non-debt expenditures, debt service as a percentage of property tax revenues, again, how leveraged is the town? These are honestly pretty low percentages, which is good for our taxpayers. Other local taxes revenue, you know, this was an interesting one, something we've seen across a number of our localities. How is COVID impacting our localities? And I know everybody here has been educated by Jenny and everyone else, but you know, overall, in 2020, the town did experience an overall increase in what we call local tax revenue. This is our, these are our sales taxes, meals taxes, transient taxes. The increases the town saw were in both business license and meals tax revenues. I know there was a meals tax revenue increase this year, and there were some decreases, of course, in our transient occupancy taxes, bank stock, and cigarette taxes. Sales taxes actually remain pretty consistent here. I know that was a big question mark on how things will be affected for our localities, but those stayed pretty consistent. The data for this is actually in the back of the CAFER under, I believe, Table 4, might be Table 5, actually, but some details back there on, oh, Table 5, excuse me, has a breakdown of all those revenues, actually, over the past 10 years, which is pretty interesting. Table 15, our BTA or Business Type Activities Self-Sufficiency by Major Fund. Of course, the town has the water fund, golf course, chestnut grove, and downtown parking funds. It's an analysis of are our operating revenues covering our operating expenses for these business-type funds? Both water, sewer, and cemetery exceeded those amounts. The golf course did take a hit this year. I know that's certainly impacted by COVID, and the downtown parking also was below that threshold as well, but actually had a pretty large increase during 2019. The last slide in this report, per capita ratios, you know, how much are we spending per capita for our various functions of the towns? Public Works and Police are certainly our largest expenditures in the town and has been pretty consistent over the years. There was a decrease in parks and rec, understandably, from the COVID-19 impact. That's all I have for these slides here. Of course, happy to answer any questions about the CAFER or all of our work, or any of these slides here before I touch on two other things.
Mute and get my council colleagues back on the, there we are. Are there any questions up to this point for our presenter, anybody? Okay, doesn't look like it, so you're off the hook for now.
Okay. Two other things that hopefully you've seen copies of, we do do an annual, what we call Management Letter. As a part of our audit, we are looking at internal controls as a part of assessing risk of the audit. That letter, along with any suggestions for management, is given to management. It also includes an update on prior year comments. The final letter we have provided to management and to the council as well is what we call our required communication with those charged with governance. That letter kind of gives an overall picture of how the audit went, if there weren't any difficulties that would be communicated in that letter. There were none, happy to say. That letter also includes what we call our Management Representation Letter. It's kind of our last piece of audit evidence that management gives to us, but always like to mention that to our councils that at the end of the audit, management, you know, is representing to us as your auditors, that they provide all the information necessary, they've answered all of our questions, they're not aware of any material fraud, material litigation. That is attached to that letter as well, but again, pretty important to, for council members to understand that. You know, again, overall, the audit went very well. Really, again, want to thank Jenny and her team, first-class team to work with, and we, again, happy we did it all remote and safely.
Thank you very much. Jenny, did you have anything to add to that?
I wanted to thank Matt and his team as well. They made it very easy to work remotely with them, and their firm really partners very well with us. I used to be an auditor, once upon a time, and have worked with many firms, and some firms have more of a gotcha attitude. And it's not that Matt and his team led us off the hook, it isn't that. If there's something that we need to do better or correct, but they're so collaborative with us, and there's always something to learn from them, and I really appreciate their team. They have great continuity, too. It's not a burn-and-shurn type of organization where you have, you're training new people every single year. It's another thing I really appreciate about Brown Edwards. And so just want to thank Matt and his team, again, for just being so patient and collaborative as we all navigated our way through the virtual audit and COVID. So thanks again.
Virtual audit, that sounds riveting. Virtual audit, that sounds riveting. I typically get the opportunity to at least just meet quickly with the auditors. And of course, this year that didn't happen because of the pandemic situation, but I thank you for your work and all of the guidance and help that your firm has given us over the years. Do any of my colleagues have questions or comments? For Matt or for Jenny, anybody? Okay, Mr. DeGugula.
Thank you, ma'am. This is Councilman DeGugula. Mr. Heepole, is it?
Yes.
Thank you so much for that. I think I got it. What I like to always get from auditors are certainly the positives, right? I mean, it looks good. It's solid, but a summary of exposures, right? Especially going into next year with the challenges we're going to have, it would be helpful, and I don't know if this is beyond what you can do, but maybe for future reference. And Jenny, I'll defer to you whether or not this is doable, but going into next year, what do we see from a trend perspective? And I only saw a few years back. I mean, what's our trend exposure going to be as we take the budget into next year? Jenny, does that make sense?
It does. So with the audit, of course, that's focused on the fiscal year that ended June 30th. So it is very much based in the past, as you know, even though it's the near past, it feels like 50 years ago. To your point with the trending, that is definitely something we're still working on with the budget process and we'll get into that a lot more with the budget process. Every month that passes, of course, we have more data, but you all, we still have to make decisions within perfect data. And so I think once we really get into the budget cycle, we can discuss more of what we think we're seeing, kind of the exposures, give you an update as to where we are with fiscal year 21 to date, knowing that some revenues are lagged, some come in once a year. Heepole's the big guy that I'm really waiting for right now. That's March. Real estate taxes, we are almost fully through the deadline. Of course, that was Monday, but the postal service has also had its challenges. So we don't think that we've collected everything yet, but that's a solid 12 million right now with still about 500,000 in receivables, et cetera. So that's, that's a comforting number, but you know, we know as we go into the winter months that the excise taxes could take a hit. If Congress doesn't renew protections under the FERC and potentially the CARES Act, there's that extra federal unemployment that could expire. There's the FERC leave that could expire. So people might really be in even more pain than they are now, which could again have an impact on things like sales taxes, which have held fairly steady for right now. So there's a lot to discuss with this budget cycle because we know this isn't going to last forever, but how long do we think this is going to last? Is this a two-year thing, three-year thing? Again, knowing that the impact of the real estate market is almost always a year lagged for local governments because assessments are done as of January 1st and that's that. So the craziness that's in the residential market right now could be a boon, but commercial retail is a different matter. So there's just a lot to consider, but it's not, not something that the audit presentation is necessarily going to touch on, but I think this is going to be a most interesting budget cycle.
No, I definitely appreciate that. And again, just for future reference, there could be a component of this CAFER that lists, you know, potential exposure. I mean, just the more we hear it, the more we see it, the more inclined we'd be to deal with it, especially again for future planning. I'm a data guy, so I, for me, there's no bad data. Obviously, if you don't have the data, that could be bad, but even if the numbers are bad, and it's not a gotcha thing, right? It's just like, give it to us. We can deal with it. We're executives, we can plan for it. And that's, that's really what I'm trying to say. If, if there's any part that you could influence that gives us more data, even if it's bad or if it's not there, we need to have that component. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions before we move into our public hearings? All right. Jenny and Matt, thank you so much to both of you, especially for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Certainly. That does bring us to our public hearings. I will open public hearings listed on the agenda and the first, the first item is Resolution 20G 56 to consider special exception application number 20-02 to permit a secondary kitchen in a single family residence at 900 Blue Street. And I will recognize, I believe, Michael Wallach, our transportation planner for the staff report and Lisa Gilloran, our community development director is also available if there are additional questions. So I will, actually, I think I misspoke. I think it's Dave Stromberg who's available for additional questions. Anyway, they're all here, ask them why. So while we're getting Michael set up, we will await your staff report. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. If I need to, I just want to congratulate you and the outgoing council members on your service to the town, and I certainly look forward to working with the new council next month.
Thank you.
So tonight I've got a special exception, 20-02. This is 900 Blue Street application for a secondary kitchen. This slide here is the zoning map. The property is located within the R15 zoning district and the property is located there at the northeast corner of Blue Street and Park Avenue. To the west is the RTC Residential Townhouse Cluster Zoning District and to the southwest is the PDD zoning district. The property is not included within the town's historic district boundaries, but the district is located nearby. This slide here, let's see, 2030 Conference of Plan map. The property is located in the neighborhood conservation, land use designation. Across the street is wetland, community facilities, and it's also located near some adaptive area residential and also not too far away from the heart of downtown. This next slide here is the aerial photograph. The property is a large corner lot and does slope uphill towards Station Street. This is the existing house, the existing dwelling. This is the front facade off of Blue Street and the existing house is 1,968 square feet. This next slide here is the rear of the dwelling and also shows the large backyard there. So the proposal, the applicant has stated that two kitchens within the new dwelling will be necessary for religious and dietary reasons. One of the kitchens would be vegetarian and the other one would not. The existing dwelling is proposed to be torn down and in its place is a proposed new dwelling that would be 8,378.82 square feet of gross floor area. And that includes a finished basement level, a main floor level and a second floor level. The single lot development plan application to replace the existing dwelling is currently under staff review for administrative approval. And the proposed new dwelling would have two wet bars in the basement and then two kitchens on that main floor level. So the zoning ordinance defines accessory food preparation area types, either by wet bar or a second kitchen. Wet bars are allowed by right and second kitchens require a special exception. So to differentiate the two there, a wet bar would include a sink, refrigerator, a small microwave and also a maximum drain line size of 1.5 inches in diameter. The, the second kitchen would be defined as including an oven, stove or cooktop and a 240 volt outlet and then also a sink drainage line that is greater than 1.5 inches in diameter. So as I mentioned, the property is located within the R15 zoning district. So this, this slide explains the dimensional standards for that district. The lot area is a minimum of 15,000 square feet. The setbacks for the house includes a 45 foot front setback, a 15 foot side setback and a 25 foot rear yard setback. The maximum height for structure is 35 feet to the mid gable. And then the maximum building coverage of the lot is 25%. There are some, some differences. If the property is within the historic district, the dimensional standards would still be the same, but a front setback reduction is possible, but it would, it would need to be at least 20 feet for that setback. And then the, the historic district review board would need to make a finding that such reduction shall cause the subject structure to be more compatible with nearby contributing structures. And it also requires design review of the architecture by the historic district review board. So the, this next slide here shows the proposed new dwelling in relation to Park Avenue and Blue Street. The, the house, the existing house and the proposed house would both front onto Blue Street. The, the next slide here is the proposed main floor level and it shows the proposed vegetarian kitchen and non-vegetarian kitchen there. And this is kind of the same thing, but zoomed in a little bit better to show the location of the two kitchens there. The vegetarian kitchen is proposed to be the larger of the two kitchens. And the, the bigger of the, the two kitchens would include a range island with bar seating, refrigerator, a large sink, dishwasher, and then the non-vegetarian kitchen would include some of the same amenities there, dishwasher, sink, oven, stove top and refrigerator. Okay, the, the next slide here is the proposed basement level floor plan. As I mentioned previously, the applicant is proposing two wet bars, which are allowed by right. The, I guess the larger of the two wet bars is located there at the, the top of the screen. And then the wet bar down there at the bottom is really just like a countertop with, with sink. And you can also see there labeled the stairs to the main floor level. And that's about all I have for the council this evening. Staff is recommending approval with the proposed conditions before you tonight and I can take any questions.
Thank you, sir. What questions do we have for Mr. Wallach? Any questions for our staff member? Ms. Friedrichs.
So Mr. Wallach, you've given us an awful lot of really good information tonight, but I just want to emphasize or question, we are only talking about whether or not they can have two kitchens, not the size of the building or how far it's setback or whether it's in the historic district. Is that correct?
That is correct. The, the proposed new dwelling is under staff review. I believe we're on a second submission right now. So it's, it's an administrative process and staff will be ensuring that the proposed new dwelling is compliant with all the zoning.
So the question before us is whether or not these two kitchens are permissible by special exception? Is it your opinion that they are?
Staff is recommending approval with the conditions before you. The zoning ordinance for, to require second kitchen, the language, I believe, is a unique and compelling need, need to be demonstrated. So that, that's really what the council is tasked to evaluate the two, the two kitchens is whether or not the applicant, the applicant has demonstrated a unique and compelling need for the second kitchen.
Okay. Thank you for all the information. Just wanted to clarify that we're not deciding on anything other than the kitchens. Thanks.
That's great.
Ms. Friedrichs, thank you for, for reiterating that because last week we did spend a lot of time on the size and I apologize for not reining that discussion in a little more quickly. So my question is the transferability number seven on the conditions is that this special exception does not run with the land and is not transferable to a future owner or to a different parcel. So that means that if the owner were to sell this property and it changed hands, what, what does that mean for the, for the owner of the home?
So the, the secondary kitchen would, would need to either be removed or converted to a permissible use per the zoning ordinance. So it could be a wet bar use or it could be a, another use if, if the owner chose.
Thank you. What other questions do my colleagues have? I thought I saw a hand, I can't remember where. Mr. DeGugula followed by Mr. Decal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilman DeGugula. Mr. Wallach, thank you for that. And just so, if it transferred or was sold, then the new owner could come back and request the same special exemption? So that's, that's a yes, they could?
That, that's my understanding, yes.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to clarify that. And I do want to thank you for the context of the historic overlay district line. That, that definitely helps. So thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Pred, Mr. Pred, Mr. Decal, do you have questions for Mr. Wallach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just wanted to reiterate the same thing. So when it comes to secondary kitchens, so what really constitutes, I asked this question in the work session as well, just wanted to say that in record as well, so you know, people be aware of. So when it comes to kitchen, we're talking about the oven, 240 volt outlet and the sink, you know, the drain is diameter more than 1.5 inch, correct? The rest remains the same. So removing kitchen, based on that item number seven, in the condition, meaning you have to remove the oven, 240 volt outlet and then the sink, if it's more than 1.5 inch diameter, the drain is, otherwise everything else can stay.
That, that is correct, yeah. Then it would go back to a wet bar use at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions before we move to the public hearing portion? Okay. So this is a public hearing which I have already opened and I believe the applicant is, is attending the meeting tonight and may wish to speak. So I believe I see him, him here. We would like for him to address the council and then if council has any questions for the applicant, we would welcome that as well.
Good evening, everybody. This is Mohan. I'm the owner of the Bolu State.
Good evening, welcome.
Yeah, so I'm really excited. So I'm near future, I'm going to be a, so the member of the Hurndon Town, so in the 2021, so probably I will move over there. So, so, so I, so I, so I, I understand, so all, all those requirements. So I, I agree with that. I don't have any comments and any questions. So I would like to say thank you for everyone so who understand my situation and so, so they are going to approve my, so this special exception. So I don't have any more to say. So I, so I'd like to say thanks again for everyone.
Thank you, sir. Do any of my colleagues have questions for the applicant? Okay, well, thank you, sir, for being here, we appreciate it. So this, this is a public hearing. And I'll ask the deputy town clerk if anyone has registered to speak on this item.
No, Madam Mayor, no one has registered to speak on this item tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, I'll close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, this is Signee Friedrichs. I move we approve this special exception.
It's Prudie De Cal, I second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve made by Ms. Friedrichs, seconded by Mr. De Cal. Discussion of the motion, Ms. Friedrichs.
First of all, I want to welcome Mr. Upreti, I think I said that, right? And thank him for, for his kindness in coming tonight. It, it, it seems like a perfectly reasonable reason to me to want a special exception. You know, if you have dietary restrictions, you need a second kitchen. And so I wish him well in, in, and he's going to be one of my neighbors. So wish him well and look forward to seeing what, what he's going to be building. So I move we approve this, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Mr. De Cal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say welcome Mr. Upreti to the town of Hurndon, thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion on the motion to approve. I do apologize to the vice mayor, I think she may have had her hand up for a question, and I did not see it on the webex. That's the, that's the hardest part of this job. So I apologize, Ms. Olem. Did you want to speak? You're, I think you're muted.
Yes. If they currently lived in the home, and I wasn't able to ask that. And I wanted to ask the question, did the applicant understand that they couldn't move non-family members in, and make this apartment? Because I know that's the only concern I've heard in the community, that people were concerned, what if someone builds walls and makes apartments? And this ends up being four units? And that's the main concern I've heard within the community.
If, if I could ask our parliamentarian, because I absolutely botched this and did not see Ms. Olem's hand, is it, do we know the answer to those questions? Or is it possible to elevate the applicant to answer that at this point? I know it's out of order, but I really don't want the question the vice mayor had to go ignored when it was my error.
Well, we, we are in the middle of discussion at this point. If there's no objection to doing that, and it is possible to re-elevate the individual, certainly. I, I would think that if council wants to hear from that individual, that could, that can be done.
I have no objection. Thank you, and I do apologize. Is IT able to bring the applicant back in? And my apologies to the applicant as well. Sheila, next, next month, this is the hardest part. I really apologize to, to everyone. Thank you for your indulgence. So did you want to ask those questions again now that, that our applicant is available?
Sure. I was just wondering, does the applicant currently live in the home? And does the applicant understand? And I'm going to pronounce your name, and please forgive me, I'm from Alabama, and I often mispronounce, but I believe it's Mr. Upreti? And, okay, and I just wanted to make sure you were aware that it wouldn't be appropriate to turn this into four units. And that's the only concern I've heard within the community. And we always hear concerns when people are putting in additional kitchens in homes.
Thank you, Ms. Olem.
Yeah, ma'am, so, so I'd like to answer your questions. So actually, I'm not living at that home right now. So this house is rent for a couple of years. So I live in outside of Hurndon, I'm living in the Fayette County, but it's the city of Hurndon. So this house is completely for me, not for rent, because I'm spending more than a million dollar, not for rental property. This is for my primary home. So I'm planning to retire in my entire life in this home. So, so for, so for that home, so we are only four member going to live, not more than four. House is almost like eight hundred and five, eight thousand, eight thousand five hundred square feet, but so occupant are, are not more than four. So I, I understand, I, I understand, so the town policy, right? So, and I understand the neighborhood. So I'm not going to violate any rules and regulations of the town. So, so, so this house is not for sale, this house is not for rent. This house, the house is just for living, so for my living, for my, my wife and my two daughters and my mom, that's it. So don't think, so I'm going to rent this house. I'm not going to rent this house, because I, I'm planning to spend more money for the house. So, right, so this is for me, not for anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you very, thank you very much. I don't think I would build a nice new house either and rent it out.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you for your attention.
I have, thank you, sir.
Thank you, and I, I see another colleague, Mr. De La Gula, do you have a question as well?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since we opened up the question, full disclosure, Mr. Upreti, I'm going to support this, so you can't change my, my decision. But I'd like to ask a question, if I could get a invitation to that housewarming vegetarian kitchen dining party?
Hundred percent.
No, I'm just kidding, just kidding. Good luck with it, thank you.
Thank, thank you all, and I appreciate my colleagues' indulgence. This is a downfall of the virtual platform, so again, my apologies. So back to, there is a motion on the floor to approve the resolution with the conditions outlined by staff, made by council member Friedrichs and seconded by Mr. De Cal. So I believe they've both already spoken, is there, is there further comment or discussion on the motion? Okay, thank you. So with, with that, again, the motion is to approve with the conditions outlined by staff, and I will ask the clerk to please call the board.
Olem?
Olem, yes.
Baker?
Baker, yes.
De La Gula?
De La Gula, yes.
De Cal?
De Cal, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel?
Merkel is yes, that motion carries unanimously, thank you. All right, I'm going to try to do better on this next one. You'd think I'd have it down after eight years. The next public hearing is Resolution twenty G fifty-seven to consider a special exception application number twenty oh six to permit a second kitchen accessory, accessory dwelling unit in a single-family residence at six fifty-two Stewart Court. And this is once again, Michael Wallach. And we have Lisa Gillaran, and I believe possibly the zoning administrator available for questions. Yes, I see them both available, so looking forward to the staff report, Mr. Wallach.
All right, thank you again, Madam Mayor and members of council. Yes, I, I have before you a special exception, S D twenty dash oh six. This is for an accessory dwelling unit, which includes a second kitchen at six five two Stewart Court. You know, kick off this presentation here with the zoning map. The, the property is located in the, in the R ten zoning district. And the property is located near, near the intersection of Stewart Court and Missouri Avenue, and it's about two-thirds of a mile or so from the Hurndon Metro Station. Next slide here is the comprehensive plan map. It's located within the Neighborhood Conservation Land Use Designation. And to the east, there is some community facilities, which is Haley Smith Park, and then the town's Hurndon Transit Oriented Core to the south. This next slide here is the, the aerial photograph orienting the house. And accessory dwelling units, this, they are not permitted by right within the town, but they are allowed through the special exception process. The ordinance does have occupancy standards, dwelling units. They, they, it requires either the accessory dwelling unit or the principal dwelling be occupied by at least one person that meets the following qualifications. And that is that the person is at least sixty-two years of age, or that person has a physical, mental, or cognitive disability. Accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed thirty-five percent of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, or twelve hundred square feet, whichever is less. And they require a minimum of one off-street parking space. And that's in addition to the parking requirements for the principal dwelling. Also, this accessory dwelling unit includes a, a new bedroom, bathroom, and secondary kitchen. And the applicant does intend to install a stove top oven and microwave in the secondary kitchen on approval of the special exception. The, the accessory dwelling unit totals approximately four hundred eighty-five point five square feet. And the applicant's partner meets the occupancy standards per the zoning ordinance. It's his desire to agent place there on the property and have some independent living quarters. Okay, so the, some background on, on the actual proposal here. The applicant completed some interior repair work for some damage that was caused by a fire back in twenty nineteen, and converted the existing attached garage as a, converted that to an accessory dwelling unit. The, let's see here, the, there's, I'll explain the proposal here next as well. The, the actual accessory dwelling unit does have two exterior doors. One would lead to the secondary kitchen, and then one leads to the, the new bedroom. And then there's a interior door connection, which leads to the family room and, and the rest of the, the house. So this is the, the site image, the exterior. The accessory dwelling unit is located there on the, I guess it would be the left side of the house there. And the driveway can accommodate three vehicles, which meets the, the zoning ordinance. And again, this is the, the proposal here, it's, it's outlined in, in the red box there. At the, at the top there of the screen is the, the front of the house. And it would include the, it's labeled on the plan, there is garage. That would be storage space. The area that's labeled as sitting room would be the accessory dwelling unit's bedroom. And then the bathroom is also located there within the bedroom, and includes a shower, sink, and toilet. And then the, the secondary kitchen is located down there at the, the bottom of the screen. And I'll get into the, the features of the second kitchen here on the next slide. This is the, the secondary kitchen layout. As you can see there on the, the left wall, would include the dishwasher, microwave, and stove, and range. The, the, the right wall there includes the refrigerator, and then the, the door, the exterior door there as well. And that is what I have for the council this evening. And again, staff is recommending approval with the proposed conditions before you tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir. What questions do we have for staff about this application? Anyone? I'm going to look really hard this time. Ms. Friedrichs.
Hi, Mr. Wallach. So like the previous application, we're ascertaining that the special exception falls into the, into the required categories? Is that right? It's just whether or not we can have another kitchen in there?
It, it is, it's really the accessory dwelling unit. The, the second kitchen is, is part of the proposal as well. I would say this, this differs a bit, you know, if you had an accessory dwelling unit that was in, say, a detached accessory structure, that is kind of the true, I'd almost call like a classical accessory dwelling unit. This, this is still an accessory dwelling unit, even though it is within the same, same structure. And so the ordinance does have to evaluate also the, the second kitchen as well.
Okay, thank you, it's a very complete report, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Friedrichs. Other questions for staff? Okay. Sheila's playing with me, moving her hand like that. So I do believe that our applicant is with us this evening, Daniel Brooks. If he would like to address the council, and if council has any questions for Mr. Brooks. Good evening, sir, welcome, we're glad to have you.
Can you hear me?
Certainly can.
I, I expect that you will approve this, because it's a legitimate need. My partner is seventy-six years old. He wants to have some independent space, and basically age in space, or in place, sorry. My only comments are that this process has been very difficult. And I think it's something that you might need to look at, that this is more up and coming, that this is what people do when they get older. They're not, we're not going to old homes and other facilities, people want to age at home. And, and the fact that it's taken me fourteen weeks to get to this point is, is pretty difficult. The conditions, which some of you brought up earlier, need to be looked at pretty well, because the sale of this home, I have to remove all of this stuff, even if who I'm selling it to meets the same criteria that I do. And even if they do, is it going to take them fourteen weeks? And how is that sale going to take place? I, I equate it to having a fenced backyard and saying, hey, this is a great house to buy for pets. This is a good house for someone who has this situation. And I, I, I just have this feeling that everything is about money. It's like, like I'm trying to do this to enhance the value of my home. The process is what's making me feel this, not, not you all. The process is that I, I'm almost accused or being penalized, because I'm asking for this. So I, I expect that you will approve this, and, and that you should, because it's, it's a legitimate request. But I also want you to look at the future. I, I don't think people should have to go through what I've gone through to put a stove in for my partner, so that he could make his own meals. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, we, we do appreciate that feedback. I'm not sure if the continuity of government and COVID situation slowed down your process, but we will definitely consider that going forward. And I appreciate your candor with us. Are, are there any questions for Mr. Brooks? Mr. De La Gula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is Councilman De La Gula. Mr. Brooks, I, I don't have any questions, but I do want to thank you for bringing this to the public. There is a majority commitment of the new council members to address housing. The issue has been here for a long time, and we're committed to addressing. An aging place is a segment of housing, as is workforce and affordable. So again, my name is Cesar De La Gula, you can quote me. We will address this, and the pain that you described, I think the process, we, we need to look at it, we need to see if there were circumstances. But I promise you, we will definitely take this up in the new council. And thank you for bringing this to us. And thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you, are there any other questions for Mr. Brooks? Okay, well, Mr. Brooks, thank you for your comments, and this is a public hearing. So I, I, I'm not sure if we have other people signed up to speak, but I'll check in with the town clerk to see.
No, Madam Mayor, there are no registered speakers this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. Mr. DeCall.
I move to approve Resolution twenty Z fifty-seven to consider a special exception, SE twenty dash oh six.
Okay, there is a motion to approve, and I'm assuming you meant with the, uh, with the conditions as staff, as staff recommended. Okay, so that was a motion made by Mr. DeCall and seconded by Mr. Delagula. Discussion on the motion. Yes, sir.
Well, this is driven by a special need, so obviously granting the special exception definitely makes sense, and I'm in favor of that. And also, I wanted to thank Mr. Brook for bringing that concern because we in the council are continuously striving to improve our process and make our processes, uh, less cumbersome for our town residents. So obviously, your comment tonight, um, you know, gave us, uh, a kind of direction to understand, to, uh, to see, you know, how we can improve our process in many other areas. Obviously, you know, we, we feel like we're doing a great job, but if there are something that you're not feeling great, or if you're going through difficult situation because of the processes, then obviously we will work on to improve the processes to make it more efficient. So thank you, thank you for bringing that concern.
Thank you, um, further discussion on the motion by the second or any other colleagues? Uh, Mr. Delagula followed by the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, it's Councilman Delagula. And just to reiterate what Councilmember DeCall said, maybe a good thing is after all this is done with, um, with the applicant, Mr. Brooks, that we sit down and maybe do a post-mortem assessment on the process. It, it could have just been delays, and, and that's certainly understandable, but where we, we could, we'll certainly address those, and thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Olem. I think you're on mute, Ms. Olem.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank Mr. Brooks for his comments, but remind him, you know where I live. You know my phone number, I would have been happy to help you out. And I know that you went through a very stressful past year with a family loss. And, um, uh, I think the town would have been, been there to help you, and I know I certainly would. You've been kind enough to have, uh, me in your neighborhood more than once, uh, with your other neighbors for, uh, just neighborhood cookouts. But, um, anytime you need something, the council members are around and planning department. But sometimes when we get caught up in things that are going on our, in our lives, we might have things fall through the cracks. But sorry you went through the difficulty, but please call me in the future.
Thank you, other, uh, comments or discussion on the motion? All right, thank you, I, I agree with the Vice Mayor. That is, I think, one of the benefits of being in a small town, is you can actually find your, your council members and your mayor when you need help. So, um, going forward, I hope that more people will, will do that. And with that, we do have a motion on the floor to approve made by Mr. DeCall and seconded by Mr. Delagula. So I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Baker?
Baker, yes.
Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel?
Merkel is yes, and that motion carries seven to zero. Our last public hearing on the agenda this evening is Ordinance twenty oh sixty-three to amend the FY twenty twenty-one adopted budget. And we have, once again, our Director of Finance, Jenny Tripoli, is here for the staff report.
So I get to conclude your public hearings, Madam Mayor, and Councilmembers Baker and McKenna, with a budget amendment? I mean, does it get any better than that?
Seems about right.
This is a, a, a quick one, it applies to the general fund and mainly to the downtown parking fund. We wanted to apply, comply with the, um, amended agreement with Comstock Hernan Venture and the town to appropriate, uh, the total amount in that amended comprehensive agreement. So we are appropriating two point eight million. The reason that we are appropriating only two point eight million is because one point one million dollars is already appropriated. We also have received a couple of off-cycle grants and received some insurance recoveries between July and now, and also went ahead and sold some surplus property. We had been waiting to do that, uh, so as not to have as many interactions during the pandemic. And so wanted to make use of those proceeds to fund certain items that either we couldn't fund in fiscal year twenty, and also use some of the surplus that was not related to CARES money to fund the very popular fall cleanup, uh, because I know we couldn't do spring cleanup, because we were very uncertain at that time with, with the costs and with the revenues. So we wanted to use some of that surplus for fall cleanup, and also for the phone system upgrade, which was necessary because it is at end-of-life and end-of-maintenance. So with that, I am happy to take any questions, and I can get into more details with any of these line items if you wish.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions for Ms. Tripoli on this item? Okay. Thank you, ma'am, well done. I'm so seeing none, as announced earlier, this is a public hearing, and I'll ask the deputy clerk if anyone has registered to speak on this item.
Oh, I think, I think Mr. McKenna was, were you trying to speak?
No, I was gonna make a motion, sorry.
Thank you, my gosh, that is the downfall of the virtual setting, so I appreciate you jumping in. Amanda, do we have any registered speakers?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no registered speakers on this item.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I will close the public hearing, and I'll move to Mr. McKenna. I believe you have a motion for us, sir?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I have, uh, move passage of ordinance twenty dash oh dash sixty-three.
And I will second. Uh, discussion on the motion, Mr. McKenna.
Jenny, just want to say thank you for all you've done. Uh, I can say with, you're one of the department leads, I can certainly say, has definitely led us into, uh, the twenty-first century. Great job with budgets, with our audits, with everything that has to do financial, especially this year. I enjoyed our conversations, everything from Monte Carlo simulations predicated upon three sigma events in the economy to, um, basic economic theory. So I, I really appreciate all the conversations we've had. And I will still bother you from time to time, that's all I have to say, thanks.
People like me really appreciate that there are people like Bill McKenna and Jenny Tripoli in the world to offset people like me, Ms. Baker?
I, I just want to say, Jenny, this is so fitting, that you are the last public hearing for, for me, Bill and Lisa. Absolute pleasure to work with you, this looks good. And, um, yeah, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you very much.
What other comments do we have? I see the Vice Mayor and Ms. Friedrichs, so Vice Mayor. But you're muted, Ms. Olem, there you go.
Appreciated that extra money and public works that they care of. All the needs people have, little things make us happy in the middle of a COVID. Thank you.
That is true. Um, I'm sorry, who, oh, Ms. Friedrichs.
I was just gonna draw your attention to the Vice Mayor, so I have nothing.
Oh, I really, see, it takes a village, y'all, thank you. Well, I am excited to have the fall cleanup, I think everybody's been at home cleaning out, so I suspect there will be lots of treasures on the side of the roads come, come, um, fall cleanup, and, well, I guess it's already passed, but, um, can't figure out what day or month it is here in, in this pandemic. But it is my pleasure to appropriate funds for this downtown, uh, plan that we have worked so diligently on for a number of years, and people before us, um, set the road for us. So, um, that, uh, once again, there's a motion to approve Ordinance twenty oh sixty-three made by Mr. McKenna and seconded by the chair, so I will ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Olem?
Olem, yes.
Baker?
Baker, yes.
Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel?
Merkel, yes, that motion carries unanimously, thank you, Jenny. Next up, we have a couple of general items. The first item is Resolution twenty G fifty-nine, establishing the Town of Hernan's twenty twenty-one legislative program. And I will recognize our town attorney, Lisa Yates, for our staff report, Ms. Yates.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, good evening, this is Lisa Yates, the town attorney. The twenty twenty Virginia General Assembly convenes in, uh, just five weeks, after concluding its historic eight-week-long special session only a few weeks ago, as I told you last week. The twenty twenty-one session will be what is called a short session, and may only last a mere thirty days. As a result, legislators, legislators, as I described last week, have been given, um, bill limits, senators' twelve bills that they can sponsor and delegates' seven. Normally, um, as I explained last week, we, uh, normally solicit requests and circulate the legislative, um, program sometime in the early fall. For a number of reasons, that was not possible this year. Nonetheless, uh, we did bring forward, um, a legislative program to you, uh, last week that consists of the items that are, um, uh, supported by the Virginia Municipal League, affecting those issues most affecting, um, local governments, cities, towns, counties. After much discussion last week, um, it was clear that, uh, there was an interest in, um, further fleshing out housing, uh, positions on housing, positions on proffers and zoning authority, and the town's position on the historic district. I did, uh, I did make the, make calls to our senators and delegates who both confirmed that they did have, already have, um, um, all of their bill slots full. And although I didn't, um, receive any requests to submit bills, I did nonetheless take, um, take the chance to submit to you, um, another option this evening for your consideration with regard to the legislative program. You do have in front of you this evening, um, what is labeled Option A, which is the program that was submitted to you and discussed last week. You also have Option B, um, which is the option to which I have added, based upon council's discussions last week, um, three, three enhanced positions. With regard to housing, I, um, have added the, uh, statement that the town supports housing solutions and believes that affordable workforce housing, affordable and workforce housing, um, are essential to family stability, optimum educational and health outcomes, and community and personal economic competitiveness. Local governments are key to solving the housing crisis in the Commonwealth. The town supports allowing local governments the authority to use flexible tools for achieving housing goals and greater land use authority for creative housing types. The town supports legislation that expands local land use authority and state funding for affordable workforce and other housing options. So that is a position statement, um, that has been expanded from last week. Also, the position statement regarding proffers and zoning authority, I have added and expanded in Option B, um, to say that the town supports the premise that the state code should extend to all localities full authority for conditional zoning to meet the needs of its current and new citizens for housing and public infrastructure. The town opposes any effort to limit localities' control of their land use decisions. State code provisions regarding zoning authority should continue to ensure that local governments have a full range of authority. And the town opposes any legislation that would preempt a locality's power to make such decisions or impose processes that weaken planning and land use functions. Coordination of local you, land use planning and transportation planning improves the ability of all levels of government to deal with and manage growth-related issues. Finally, um, although we have, um, taken this to the General Assembly before, there was some discussion, um, and I, even though there was no request, I felt like council might want to see a position statement on duty to disclose, uh, the historic district in a, uh, land, um, sales transaction. So I've included the statement that says that the town supports Amendment of the Code of Virginia to establish an affirmative duty for disclosure to buyers that a property is located within a historic district. Those three position statements are on Option B. So the, um, decision this evening is regarding, uh, staff does recommend that, um, council adopt either, um, Option A or Option B. I think, perhaps Option B is, um, more in line with, uh, what we heard last week. But I am here for questions, um, and happy to answer them.
Uh, thank you, ma'am, um, what questions do we have for the town attorney, Ms. Friedrichs?
Madam Town Attorney, thank you so much for, um, for putting together these, uh, positions. And I know that positions are necessarily, um, not too specific so that they can be flexible. And so I would like to ask, I understand the historic district one quite well, but what part of the housing solutions and the proffers and zoning authority would you say specifically addresses the issues that were raised at the last meeting? Just the, the little which sentences?
Housing solutions, I would say that the, um, first sentence of that one.
Okay.
The third sentence would specifically address that. Flexible tools to, for achieving housing goals and greater land use authority. And also, the final sentence, which says that the town supports legislation that expands local land use authority, and of course, state funding for affordable workforce and other housing options. There's also language in the zoning, um, position statement that would be consistent with the discussion, um, that we had last week.
So, um, so in the housing solutions, uh, paragraph, which I know you had to put together, but, um, are we saying, are we asking for the ability to communicate, or just the ability to have the authority? Because one of the, one of the problems that we've run into, and I thought we discussed this last week, was whether or not we, um, whether or not we can raise questions. I, I know we can't solve that right away, but I thought maybe if we put it in the position statement, it would someday take root, the ability to discuss proffers openly. What do you think?
Um, uh, there's a couple things surrounding this. I think that this is where the, um, discussions that the town manager referenced in his comments earlier are going to help council, um, have, council and staff have, right, clearer understanding of what's permitted, um, and what's not. Even if the, there's, there's two situations that, um, control conditional land use, which is what is known as proffers. One of them is the regulations that are, um, adopted by the General Assembly and included in the Code of Virginia. Those are things that the General Assembly could, could change. What the General Assembly cannot change, and what exists, regardless of the General Assembly, in fact, it's a nationwide situation, is case law. Case law that's, um, comes up through the federal courts and through the Supreme Court would exist despite, um, despite what the Virginia General Assembly might do. So, um, there are a number of lines of cases that, um, prohibit the sort of things that we've talked about. Yeah, so those things wouldn't change, so this really is a bigger, um, discussion than...
Yeah, I thought we were discuss, I, I thought we were dealing with state law, I didn't realize it was also federal law. Okay, I really appreciate this, and thank you for... Okay, I really appreciate this and thank you for explicating a little bit for me.
Sure.
Thank you. Other questions for staff on, on the two items before us here? Making sure I don't miss anybody? Okay, so if there are no questions, there are two versions here, so if...
Madam Mayor, I see, Vice Mayor Olin with her hand up again. I want to make sure.
Okay. Madam Vice Mayor?
I thought you had concluded.
I was, I was entertaining a motion. If that's why you had your hand raised, I will call on you for that.
Okay. Olin speaking. Madam Mayor, I move approval of 20G-59, Option B.
Second.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion made by the Vice Mayor, and I heard Mr. DeCall as the second, although I believe there were multiple seconds. Just for, to approve Resolution 20G-59, version B. Discussion on the motion. Yes, ma'am?
Yes. Olin speaking. Yes, I know this was a very unusual year. I know that I always enjoy the VML discussions after they've had the session to talk about the things that did get asked and work with the other communities. And then to start forming our own legislative agenda, which I was on that call, I believe with Councilmember Friedrich this, this year. We attended that together virtually, and it's always interesting and for us to put ours together. But part of the piece that got lapped out of this was the ability to really get in there and talk to the other legislators as well as colleagues around the state so that we could make sure that we had things on there that we could get through the General Assembly. It's great to send them down with our delegate and our senator. But if we hadn't laid the groundwork for getting things done, it's often for naught. So I appreciate your work and adding these things to it. And I had specifically asked our senator to carry, would it be possible to carry back in late October, early November, something about the historic overlay district and a requirement of the realtors? And because of the things they're going to have on their plate with the emergency situation still going on, it just wasn't felt that there would be a lot of excitement and energy to get other legislators on that. So with that, I rest my questions and comments.
Thank you. Mr. DeCall, did you have comments as the second?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilman DeCall. So this is great. Thank you, Madam Town Attorney, for putting this together in a short period of time. And this is pretty good. This is a starting point, you know, to show our position and to continuously challenge our legislators down in Richmond to amend or to adopt the legislation that puts us in more favorable position to talk about the proffers and housing and workforce housing and many other issues. So this is a good starting point, although we did not have enough time from last week to this week, but I, I commend you on putting this into Option B. And Option B looks much better than Option A, even though Option A had a lot of things covered, but especially the housing, proffers, and then the duty to disclose historic district are beautifully crafted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Further discussion on the motion. Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, I want to just thank Madam Town Attorney for your efforts on this. You went beyond in regards to, you know, the amount of time that you were given on this. I will say, I, I think this, again, this is a roadmap versus an actual, you know, step-by-step situation. And again, I think this also addresses the way the state of Virginia does business to begin with. To me, I mean, being in a different state, understanding comparative states and comparative governments, it's pretty Byzantine, in my opinion, in regards to there's slots and there's only so much that can be carried, and, and there's only three or four months in which they do business. You know, New Jersey's a home rule states 24/7. I can call an assemblyman, which is the equivalent of a delegate. I could call them in, in, in a day, and it would just go to, because whether it was Christmas or whatever, they were doing something. So there's a lot of things that unfortunately, it's like aligning Saturn and Jupiter together to make sure that the tidal waves are, it's a mess. But in any event, we just got to keep on plugging, and more importantly, maybe make some trips down to Richmond, let them know that we're serious. So I just want to thank everyone, and Ms. Yates, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Anyone? I'm looking, but I'm glad you guys have my back helping me check. Thank you. Okay, well, I concur. I think that it's a long slog to get something like this passed, but I think that this is a great way to put our thoughts down in the preliminary legislative agenda, give us a chance, well, the next council, a chance to have those informative meetings with the subject matter experts. And I think it's going to put the town in a great position, you know, a year from now to make a stronger, stronger case than we could today. So I appreciate all of the hard work that's gone into this, and especially from our town attorney this past week. Thank you. So I'll stop talking and reiterate that the motion on the floor was for Option B to approve made by the Vice Mayor and seconded by Mr. DeCall. And I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Olin?
Olin, yeah.
Baker?
Baker, yes.
Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel?
Merkel is yes, and that motion carries 7-0. And our last item on our general portion of the agenda is Chief Maggie DeBoer will be letting us know about a Resolution 20G-64 to authorize the chief of police to sign a Northern Virginia Critical Incident Response Team, MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, allowing the Herndon Police Department to participate in mutual aid response throughout Northern Virginia region. And I believe we have the chief, and maybe no video. Is that what I'm seeing? Audio only?
I had video earlier. I don't know why. I don't have it now. Oh, wait, it's, it might be online.
There you are. All right, Chief, doing great. Nice to see you. Go right ahead.
Have a good evening. Thank you. Thank you for having me this evening. And Mayor Merkel, Councilman McKenna, and Baker, I just want to publicly thank you for all the support you've provided to us over the many years that you've been in, in, in your positions. I'm sure we'll have some time personally to thank you, but I wanted to publicly do that because your support means everything to the men and women of the Herndon Police Department. So thank you. Tonight, I am here to present an MOU that I have been working with for over 12 months with my fellow colleagues around the region, the Northern Virginia chiefs. And we decided over 12 months ago that we wanted to take a proactive look in developing a team, which we have labeled a Critical Incident Response Team. This team has actually been put together involving having all the jurisdictions working critical incidents for each other's jurisdiction. You know, the purpose of this really, you know, this is really, goes to the outcry of what police reform is all about, about public trust and accountability. But this is a team that will conduct a thorough and really objective investigation of all critical incidents, like police, police shootings, use of force incidents that end, you know, in a bad way, officer suicides, and those types of very difficult issues. But it allows an objective look at that investigation. So it basically takes the jurisdiction where the event happened, and it brings an independent team in to do that investigation. That helps to promote public confidence that the investigation is being done fairly and impartially, and should eliminate any conflicts of interest that could arise in really investigating your own, your own case. This team really is, as you know, in Herndon, we had our own police shooting here over a year ago. And as you know, because of the size of our jurisdiction, we do have limited resources here. So we are ready now rely on an outside entity to investigate our critical incidents. In the past, Fairfax County has gladly provided that resource for us. However, we had no MOU in place to do those investigations. They had, they did a stellar job, and we will continue, no matter, even if this team is put in place, we will continue to utilize resources from the county to assist us in different types of callouts, like SWAT callouts and other special resources that they help us with whenever needed. But this team is, is going to be really important because not only will provide that independent look, but it will have an MOU in place that will govern all the procedures and guidelines and processes that are, will be followed when any critical incident happens. There is another plus for this to us in addition to the independent investigation piece. We will have two, possibly three, team members assigned to the CERT team, the Critical Incident Response Team. That will be a detective and a supervisor. They will be working critical incidents that arise in other jurisdictions. And what that also does, allow us to build expertise within our own investigative team here in town, and in turn, that expertise can be used when we have to investigate our own town-related community events here. So we are actually building our expertise. At the same time, we are getting, you know, a resource to come here to help us in Herndon when we have our own critical incidents to investigate. When a critical incident happens, despite the fact that this independent team will be moving, coming into the jurisdiction to work with us, we will have an agency liaison who will be working with that team and providing information to me or, or any chief that's sitting in my shoes in the future. That chief will still have complete control of the information that's released as far as press releases, press conferences, the release of any videos or information that that chief wants to let out. So we still retain control of that. We've worked with our town, county, and city attorneys in putting this MOU together. So I want to thank Lisa Yates for helping us with that as well. We also got input from the Commonwealth attorneys who, whose jurisdictions these cover. Those Commonwealth attorneys will investigate that case no matter who does it, whether we investigate it ourselves, whether Fairfax came in, state police, or this team does it. It doesn't change that investigative piece. It's still the Commonwealth attorney in that jurisdiction who will investigate that case no matter which team actually does the case. We have a great group of people already signed on to do this. Most of the jurisdictions are in the process right now of getting these approved through their bodies. Some do not have to go through elective bodies, so they're ready to go. Several others are in that process now. And we do have at least one other jurisdiction that's planning to come on board with us after the first of the year. That's not part of this MOU right now as soon as they get some of their issues settled in their jurisdiction. And I'd be happy to answer any questions for you at this time.
Thank you, Chief. What questions do we have for the chief on this matter? Anybody? No? All right, I knew somebody would. Call on Mr. DeCall and then Ms. Friedrichs. And then if anybody else has a question, make sure to, to flail.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember DeCall. Thank you, Chief DeBoer. Just one question. We asked about the Fairfax County already in the work session as well. The biggest two jurisdictions, which is Fairfax County as well as the Loudoun County. I didn't see Loudoun County also as part of this MOU. Have they? Do you know why they are not part of it? We talked about Fairfax County, but Loudoun, I'm not sure.
Yeah, and I should have mentioned Loudoun last time, too. I can't provide you with a reason why, why Sheriff Chapman has chosen not to participate. He was involved in the discussions throughout the building of this MOU and the development of this team. And by the way, that, that MOU is only really a launching pad for us because that launching pad will then lead us into putting together SOP. So we don't expect to operationalize this until at least March 1st at the earliest. We just need approvals in place. Let me go back to your question, sir. I can't tell you why Loudoun decided, Sheriff Chapman decided not to be part of this. Fairfax County is in the midst of a leadership change at this point. They have asked a lot of questions, were involved. They had elected not to come on board initially. But Chief Rossler is retiring in early February, and they are in the process to search for a new chief. We expect to reapproach that new chief and hopefully bring them aboard. Not only does Fairfax, are they large, they have a lot of very experienced resources in investigating these, and we would love to have their detectives and their supervisors as part of our team moving forward. So we do plan to reapproach them when they get new leadership in place.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. DeCall, and I believe it was Ms. Friedrichs.
Yes, thank you, Chief. I want to commend you for working so hard and taking the initiative to, to get something like this put together and move it forward. I do have some questions. We had talked in the work session about cost, and I don't want to harp on it, but how many critical incidents do we normally have in Herndon? You know, a year versus other...
I'm not about to jinx that right now. But I am not going to go there. Councilman Friedrichs, I do not want to go there, but I can tell you in eight years, you know, we've been very, very fortunate that we've had one police shooting in eight years. You know, it just depends. Luck runs different ways, and a lot of that is luck. A lot of it is the performance of their officers, certainly, and there are things we can and can't control. So we don't have a lot. Even around the region, they tend to run together sometimes, but then you can go long periods of time without them. The nice thing that I, that I can tell you about this, this team is going to have enough detectives and supervisors on it. The larger agencies will have more committed than the smaller agencies like ours because of the resource numbers. If Herndon is in the midst of an incident, let's say we're working a homicide here or a bank robbery or something critical, and we can't spare those resources because a critical incident just happened, the shooting just happened to Prince William, we would not send detectives to that scene at that point in time. We take care of our own house first. That always is the case. The overtime involved is just staff time for overtime for the few that would be working it. A large amount of that time would be on duty unless they were called out on an overtime basis. But also keep in mind that if we had a critical, critical incident here, we have a lot of other people paying overtime for their, their folks to work our critical incidents as well. I do not expect it to impact my, any request that I have for, for additional overtime in the budget whatsoever.
Okay. Well, that's great to know, and I want to draw your attention to the fact that there are two typos on page 11 before you submit this.
I appreciate that, actually. Mr. Washington pointed out one to me the other day. We're going to get that done before the signing's actually going. We're just waiting for the approvals, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Other, other questions for the chief? All right. Well, this is a general item, so I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Olin, I move 20-G-64 for approval.
I'll second that, Baker.
All right, I have a motion to approve by the Vice Mayor and seconded by Ms. Baker. Discussion on the motion. Madam Vice Mayor?
This is Olin speaking. Thank you, Chief, for bringing this forward. For some reason, I guess I just always thought we had something in writing in, in the past. We just had some good working relationships, but it's always better to have it all in writing. So thank you very much for taking the lead on this and putting it together. And also for attorney for helping. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree with that. I, I was surprised, too, and appreciate that there's some formality and it's established, and also how you've presented that this, there'll be little impact, and it's mostly, you know, certainly more benefit than, than anything else to us. So thank you for that.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? Mr. DeCall? I did hear you seconding as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Pradeep DeCall again, Councilmember DeCall. Thank you, Chief. I believe this promotes the independent investigation and also, you know, promotes the public confidence. So therefore, this is great. And also, there is no financial impact either based on the conversation we have. And given the size of our police force compared to our neighboring jurisdiction, I think we will be more beneficiary than the benefactor. So, you know, this is great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from my colleagues? Okay, thank you. I, I agree. It is nice to have it formalized. I think it just will save time to make something start in place without having to make all those phone calls. But having the great relationships we do around the region certainly will enhance our ability to use this. So Chief, thanks again for your leadership. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So with that, we had a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Ms. Baker, and I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Olin?
Olin, yeah.
Baker?
Baker, yes.
Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel?
Merkel is yes, and that motion carries unanimously once again. Thank you all. Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda, which includes the items listed here?
Councilman McKenna says yes.
Baker, I'll second that.
All right. All right, so I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Olem?
Olem says yeah.
Baker?
Baker, yes.
Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeKal?
DeKal is yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes. Thank you.
McKenna is yes.
Merkel?
Merkel is yes. That motion carries unanimously and that concludes our agenda this evening. I believe I see Ms. Baker.
Madam Mayor, seeing no further business for the 2019-2020 Council, I move we adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn made by our former Vice Mayor, Ms. Baker, and our, seconded by our current Vice Mayor and Mayor-elect, Ms. Olem. Is there discussion on the motion? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Olem? No?
Didn't you have comments?
I do. I, if you'll bear with me, you guys know I'm an emotional person and so I have promised myself I'm not going to tear up while I say this, but I did want to take just a moment and I promise it's not long, but, you know, we're here. I can't believe it's my last public meeting as your mayor. It's hard to believe that, I did prepare remarks, I don't usually do that, but I was afraid I would get off topic. It's hard to believe that a decade has passed since Sheila and I first ran for council together and so much has happened since then. In 2010, the town really hadn't started planning for Metro and many residents had no idea where the station would even be. A lot of them thought it would be down where the depot is in our downtown. Yet another downtown plan had come and gone and little did I know at that time how many had come and gone. But today in 2020, despite the hardships of 2020, Herndon Station is ready to open. Someday it will open. And we are finally under contract with Comstock to build our downtown that we've dreamed of for generations, really. You know, several of our last votes and my last votes here on the dais have been to amend the comprehensive agreement and appropriate funding for the downtown. And it just seems kind of the perfect way to wrap up my tenure here as your mayor. You know, in 10 years, we've gone from a town divided over day labor to a small town with a worldview, a hometown where everyone feels welcome and where people really know their neighbors, although I think people always really knew their neighbors here in Herndon. We are now a town that celebrates diversity and inclusion, no matter where you come from, what you look like, how you worship, how you communicate, thanks to Growing Kids Therapy Center, or who you love. And I'm really proud of the role that I have been privileged to play in making some of those things happen. I'm sure you can guess it was not an easy decision to decide not to run for reelection because being the mayor, Sheila, is the best job in politics. I mean, it is, it has been the honor of my life to serve as the mayor. And I realized when I did the math the other day, I've been on the dais for 10 years. That's one-third of my adult life, so yikes. I can't thank Herndon enough for placing your trust in me all these years. The very best part of the job has been all the people that I've met along the way, people who work for the town, business owners, and most of all, the people who call Herndon home. I've visited hundreds of businesses in the town and I've been on every single street and in every single neighborhood and have gotten to know town residents in all those places and I've truly loved serving as the mayor. And I'll definitely miss the job. Here I go, guys. Lisa and Bill, working closely with you has helped me grow professionally and personally in so many ways. So thank you for that great working relationship and how you guided me to grow into my job. Our town staff across the board is the best in the business and it's been an honor to represent all of you and I will always be your biggest cheerleader. I don't know if you remember, but the first day that I officially took office was July 1st, 2012, and it was exactly three days after the derecho shocked the area and caused so much chaos and damage. And I remember that was when I first really got to know Bill Ashton because somehow we were trying to connect on all of that. And here I am wrapping up this term in the midst of a global pandemic. So who knows? Maybe things will calm down once I get out of here. It's been quite a ride. It definitely has not been the year that any of us expected. And back on March 24th, when we all convened in the council chambers that time, it never crossed my mind that might be the last time that we sat together on the dais this term, but turns out it was. I certainly never imagined, you know, you guys and myself declaring any state of emergency of any sort, let alone declaring a pandemic public health emergency. But through it all, I've learned a whole lot and I've seen our region pulled together like never before. We live in a great area and we have great relationships around the region and I know that the council and the town will continue to benefit from that. And the vaccine is coming, so if we just keep on doing what we're doing, we will get through this together. I'm almost done, I promise. There are way too many people to thank, so I'm going to keep it simple. First, I want to say thank you to Richard Downer, I think, for asking me nearly 15 years ago, when I was just a mom excited about free books for my child, asking me if I'd ever thought about getting involved in the town. Well, turns out I did, Richard, so thank you for encouraging me. I also want to thank the ladies from Ladies Brunch, which Sheila was a part of, and I think Jen and many others, Judy Downer, Chris Griffin, really assembled and organized and connected a lot of strong women who were motivated in the town and wanted to make some change happen. And that really gave me the courage to run in the first place. Most of all, I've got to thank my husband and my kids, who aren't in here, but I'm going to say it for the record anyway. They've sacrificed so much for me to be able to serve. You know, I ran because I thought they were getting big because they were two and five and now they're in seventh grade and learning to drive. But they don't even remember a time when I wasn't the mayor. And perhaps my most amazing accomplishment as mayor is that somehow I never had to bring them to a public hearing. It was dicey a few times back in the day, but we got through it. So seriously, Dave and I love this town even more today than the day we moved in and we plan to be here for a long time to come. So despite the crazy rumors that I'm taking off to San Diego or moving away, you guys are stuck with me as your neighbor, even though I won't be sitting in the middle chair anymore. There's no place we'd rather raise our family and we're already kind of growing old here together than right down here in downtown Herndon. So finally, to my colleagues, each of you here tonight and every council colleague that I've served with for the past 10 years, thank you. I've learned something from each and every one of you and I'm grateful to each of you for your service to the town. And speaking of colleagues, Sheila, it's showtime. Congratulations, Madam Mayor-elect. I have total confidence in your leadership and the town is fortunate to have you coming into the helm. You've certainly earned this seat, so it's my great honor to pass the gavel right over to you, Sheila. Do you have your, oh, the magic of Wemex, look at that. So with that, we have a motion to adjourn made by Jen and seconded by Sheila, and I will ask the clerk to, once again, please call the roll.
Olem?
Olem, yes.
Baker?
Baker, yes. Nicely said, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeKal?
DeKal, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, enthusiastically, yes.
I'm considering voting no because I'm not sure if I want it to be over, but I am a yes and that vote is unanimous and we stand adjourned at 9:38 PM. That's a wrap, guys. Thank you, Herndon. It's been an honor to serve with you.
Good for you.
All right, good night.